Okay, um, first thing we have is the public comment, uh, excuse me. We, Ms. Ms. Douglas accidentally left off a migrant presentation that is to be given first thing, and I guess that would be you, Ms. Osborne, to come up, and I'll turn it over to you, and if you want to bring your minion, as the movie says, okay.
Lucy, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and Superintendent Chriswell, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come today. We're going to wow you with some of the things that the migrant program is doing for the summer. And for those of you that do not know, our migrant program, the office is located in Crescent City, and one of the things that we really strive to do, as far as the children are concerned, is to promote academic excellence and make sure that the families and everyone are there and being served, and we are providing educational resources and support services to them. We have five programs in the, in our migrant program. We have Title One, Part C, the Title Three, which is English language of other, English speakers of other languages, the WIA 167, the EL Civics, that we have an MOU with First Coast Technical, and the Emma Beckus Program, and I'll let Lucy talk about one of those in a minute. The Bi-National Teacher Program, each year, for the last fifteen years, we have received a teacher from Mexico that comes and spends the entire summer with us and works with our children and our parents. And his day starts at nine o'clock and ends at eight o'clock at night. So he is there, and we get our money's worth from this gentleman. We will let Lucy introduce him later in the program. The Summer Program, we started June fifteenth and we will end July thirty-first. And some of the things that we have done, and we're in the process of doing, is that we have worked with five high school students, making sure that they are in line to graduate with credit accrual and also Florida Virtual. We have twelve students in the Palaca area that are attending, attending in the Palaca Police Athletic League Camp Higher Ground. We have twenty-three children enrolled in evening tutorial. We have twenty-three children enrolled in the various daycare centers throughout Putnam County, Interlaken, Palaca, as well as Crescent City. Then we have six, we had six, or five, so I'm sorry, five career interns with WorkSource this summer that worked with us. They were paid through Career Source, and we got their services free. And then we have thirty-nine farm worker, Career Development Program participants this summer. So we are an ongoing program throughout the entire summer. The one other thing that we also do is the Summer Lunch Program, and so far, our highest number for the year has been ninety-two children that we have served, taking the bus into the highest population as far as our migrant and seasonal farm worker communities concerned. Make, to make sure that everybody participates in this program, we go door-to-door handing out flyers with all of the information about when the bus is scheduled and the days that we serve the lunches. And, um, okay, I'm, I'm gonna let Lucy, since I've already talked about the lunch program in detail, I'm gonna let Lucy talk about the Plaza Comunitaria program that we also run, and that will tie in also with our Bi-National Teacher. Ms. Lucy?
Good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be out of Crescent City for a little bit. We have, we have to come back because our Bi-National Teacher is here, and he has to be back in Crescent City to teach class tonight, so.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes, and it's glad to be here, we're glad to be here. Some of the services we provide with our Plaza Comunitaria, with our strong collaboration with the Government of Mexico, it's literacy in the native language for our parents and those that couldn't continue school whenever they left Mexico. We do Primaria, which is basic education, first to sixth grade, Secundaria, which is our seventh to ninth grade, and those are certifications recognized by the Secretary of Education in Mexico, and are done through the materials done with the National Institute of Adult Education in Mexico. We also have distance learning high school for those students that come to us past ninth grade and that they want to continue so they can get their high school with the Mexican educational system. We also have ESL Civic classes, because we do believe that integration into this new culture is very important, so we do have classes ongoing every, all year for our parents and our youth to integrate into the new community. We do have GED, because we do have those instances when we have students dropping out of our regular school system. So we do student retrieve, retrieval, and we have GED in English and Spanish for those students that cannot master the language. We do have the WIA 167 Vocational Program, which is a grant through the Department of Labor for our students who want to continue past high school and want to get a trade, such as CNA, nursing, welding, and stuff like that, as well as a center serves as a wealth of community resources, as our superintendent and some other visitors witnessed last Monday or Tuesday, last week. And I'm not gonna go into the questions yet. Like Ms. Osborne said, we participate in the Bi-National Teacher Exchange Program, and this year, we are fortunate enough to have Mr. Jorge Luis Garcia Garcia, who is a native of the great state of Jalisco, specifically from La Barca, a small town located just seventy miles southeast of Jalisco. As you will know, Jalisco is known for its mariachi and the town of traditions. They say Jalisco is Mexico. So if you go to Jalisco, you would have everything. La Barca is a small agricultural town where we share many families and students. Actually, in one classroom that I visited this past summer, all of the students in the CNA program that you can see on your screen, when we asked how many of those students had relatives in the U.S., that was the showing of hands that we saw when we asked the questions. The question, as you can see, that's just about everybody, and I think some of the teachers also raised their hands. So, Mr. Jorge comes to us not only with a BA in teaching English for middle, middle and high school grades, he also has a wealth of knowledge and experience of areas of computer programming and the arts of teacher. But the most important experience that he had, and why he was selected, is that he has personal experience in the academic and social impact of the migratory lifestyle as he graduated from a high school in Livingston, California. He is also, he was also a migrant student. Mr. Garcia has been teaching English in private and public schools since nineteen ninety-three in both elementary and high school. Currently, he teaches English in two high schools in La Barca, Jalisco, where the population is very high and the community is agricultural. This is the very first time that he participates in the Bi-National Teacher Experience, Exchange Program, and his desire to participate was basically to just improve his teaching skills, as well as to hopefully also improve the way he teaches English in his native town, but also help us teach English in a better way. I will also show you one picture of a parent meeting at one of his schools where they were giving out the grades, and then I will introduce you, Mr. Jorge Luis Garcia. You wanna come over and just share a little bit of your thoughts about your experience? And this was, this was a parent meeting, and you can see the showing of parents, the meeting was outside, and it was an agricultural community, and they were having some of the same issues we have. Some of the kids were having low grades because they are having to go to work, and they were missing school because of work, so I can, he can pretty much relate when we see some of those issues. Mr. Jorge?
Yeah, thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
How are you today? Well, for me, it's very exciting to be here today, because this is my first time speaking in a place like this. For me, it's very exciting. This is my first experience. This is the first time that I come to the United States working as a teacher, and what can I say, I'm having a great time teaching here with the students, learning new things every day. I didn't come to teach, I, I also came here to learn a lot of things. I'm teaching and I'm learning at the same time, and that feels great. One of the experience about the students that I'm working with is that they look very happy when they see their culture, and when they do the dancing and the singing, and they get very excited about it, that feels great, and that's, that's the most important thing about doing this job. Another thing is that I really love this place. You have a beautiful place here, a lot of trees and lakes and the ocean, that's great. So I'm having a great time. I hope coming the next year, too, that's one of my things I'm looking forward to. So I'm trying to do my best here, and I hope you go to the closure, some of you, if you're invited, you get an invitation if you go over there, so you can see us, what we have, the dancing, the singing, and all the things that we have done with the kids over there. That'd be great, having you in a closure. So, thank you for giving this space and be with you here today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And like Mr. Jorge said, we want to invite everybody here on July twenty-ninth at the Miller Intermediate Auditorium at six o'clock for our end-of-the-year Bi-National Teacher Exchange Program Extravaganza. It's always very full of dances, tradition, and most of all is family-oriented, and you will see many of the arts and crafts and things that the students have done during the, the year. It will be both adults and children work that we will see, and we hope to see everybody there next week. I mean, not next week, about two weeks.
Would this be a spinoff of the original program we started some years ago?
Yes, sir.
And we had the ambassador from Wanawato and...
And you made a trip to Manabira Cruz?
They sent me to Wanawato.
Wanawato, okay.
But that was, that was an interesting, no wonder, no wonder the children love, love being here. It was certainly an eye-opening trip. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, a lot of pictures. Lucy, are you finished, or are you going?
I'm finished, unless you have questions.
Any questions, Board of, of Lucy? She has never met a microphone she didn't like.
The first one.
You always, always has been real good at telling me what to do. First on the list today, I would like to call an old friend of mine, Mark Levine, up, and he wants to address the board on...
Pam's shaking her head, no.
Uh, you don't want to come now?
Do you want me to come now and come now or come over?
Oh, you want to wait till the, that particular time?
It matters not.
Well, this is the...
I'll be up to the board and you just...
This is, you're on a public comment forum, but I will wait, Mark, okay?
That's just what they told me to do.
Yes, sir. I, I got you.
Okay, sir.
Don't let me forget that, Terry.
All right.
Okay. Um, Ms. Jorgensen couldn't be here today, so I'm, as Vice Chair, I'm filling in for her, so we wish her well.
So we're not calling?
Um, the next one would be Ms. Tammy Wadeston, wanted to come forward and, and speak and address the board. She, Ms. Ms. Douglas said that she would not be participating.
Okay. Hi, um, first, I just want to say that I'm not a speaker, that I'm nervous up here, and I also would like to say that I have a child who has Asperger's Syndrome. He's extremely high-functioning. He is currently at Mosley Elementary School, and I have another son that will be going into kindergarten. We are zoned for Mosley Elementary. I would like to thank the school board for letting me talk to you. I'd also like to thank Mr. David Buckles for communicating over the past couple of weeks, Travis Weaver and Ms. Libby Weaver, for all of her help with the 504 and IEP meetings that she's helped us with. My main concern is, I feel like that there is what would be called reverse discrimination going on with the students at Mosley Elementary. My son has been targeted by what I feel is a bully, and also by other students. Unfortunately, he feels that the main thing that he has learned from Mosley, or I feel that the main thing that he has learned from Mosley is to be racist. Um, I'm sorry, and I gotta put on these funky glasses to see, because I have a visual disability. The bullying started, um, his, in the fall. He was punched in the stomach because he touched a child, and like I said, he has Asperger's Syndrome. He doesn't understand personal boundaries. He's been in behavioral counseling since he was four. He's nine now. At the time, the Vice Principal, Chris Lee, said that he felt like that counseling the students would be adequate, and, and I agreed at that point, you know, that we would try that. It continued, physical interaction or physical harm continued by the same student to my son on other occasions. He was ganged up by that particular student and another student in the bathroom one day, and David, my son David, received a referral on that day, and Chris Lee called me and said that he was not going to process the referral because he knew that these particular children had been picking on David. And then, uh, towards the end of the year, the same student was caught on video punching my child. Whenever I contacted the school board, I mean, not the school board, the school, and I contacted Travis Weaver, there was a bullying investigation done. This is the result of the bullying investigation. I only have one copy, I'm sorry. They said that they do feel like there was an act of aggression, but that for it to be considered bullying, there had to be, be more than one act of harassment or bullying. And unfortunately, these times that the students were quote "canceled," apparently was not documented, therefore, it was not considered bullying because there was no documentation of the other physical contact, of, not contact, but, um, did punching and hitting and calling of names, the harassment. I have here also communication from email from Mrs. McCool and I, where I stated before the last attack that was on video, that David was being harassed again, and that I needed somebody to intervene, and within two days was whenever he was punched, and it was caught on video. So there's a copy of that, of the emails. I also have a letter here that David wrote. This is back in November, whenever it first happened. He was sent to the office, he received a referral because he was supposedly being racist against the African-American students, and he's, his statement was that he didn't want black children to touch him or his stuff. With the autism, this came out because he said that they had told him, that other children had told him, that they didn't want him touching him or touching them or their things, and he felt like that he was being discriminated against, and that's where this statement came from. So I have a letter that he actually wrote, and this was, like I said, back in November. Whenever the child was on video punching David, my husband and I felt like that we had worked with the, the school.
Pam, excuse me a minute. I meant to mention that we only give three minutes when you speak, so, uh, I guess I'm over time right now, and I had him shut the timer off, and I was gonna do it with my watch, and I did not do it. So Terry Rice, we could give her...
We can extend it. Just have to approve the board, just gotta approve it.
Okay.
Board would have to approve her to go on a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, let's say... Okay. Thank you. My husband and I took David out of school temporarily. We didn't withdraw him physically, I mean, on paperwork. We just took him out until we felt like that it would be a safe environment for him to return. We went to the courthouse, and we applied for a restraining order against this particular student. Judge Dupont felt like that there was enough to where he granted a temporary restraining order against another student, a no-contact order at Mosley Elementary School, and this is a copy of it. My concern is, it was a no-contact order, and that was the only way that I was able to get the teachers, the principals, or anybody to separate the two students. It was the only way that I was able to have extra eyes on my child. He is definitely targeted, I believe, one, because of his autism, two, because of his race. And the reason why I say because of his race is because there are varying, there are other Caucasian students at the school that are experiencing the same issues. They're being ganged up in the bathrooms, they're being shoved down on the playgrounds, and I know of three other families right now who are trying to get their children in other schools. Which brings me to, my next question is, I'm not sure about the process right now about the school choice, because as far as I understand, the, the test scores are not in yet. So I have put in a hardship for my children, both of them, to go to James A. Long Elementary School, and I have particular reasons for picking that school. One, my objective is to have them in the Cambridge Program. They are on the waiting list. I accidentally misunderstood Ms. Chriswell whenever I was at the auditorium, and I thought she said that the, something about, I, I misunderstood the deadline, so the applications got in a few days late. However, they are on a waiting list, so I would like for my children to be able to go there, so whenever, hopefully they are accepted, that they won't have to change campuses again. And also because of the times, because my son, who has autism, also has a sleeping disorder, and it's very hard for us to be able to get him in bed at a certain time and to get him up to go to school, and, and it is a, it starts later than Melon. And I think that is all that I, oh, there was one more thing that I wanted to, the other reason why that I feel like that there is some discrimination is because this, and also negligence, is because this student, as far as I'm concerned, whenever there's physical contact, as far as I understood, is there was supposed to be a referral. This was caught on video. As far as I understand, there was no referral for this student. He was allowed to go on the SeaWorld field trip, and not only was he allowed to go on the SeaWorld field trip, he was placed in the seat in front of my child on the way and back from SeaWorld. So I feel like that there is definite, definite negligence on the, with keeping the children safe.
Thank you, Tammy. Board, any questions? If not, I'd like to direct Mr. Weaver to get with the Director of Elementary Education and report back to us, Board Members, on that, and we can communicate with Tammy. I tried to find you today, Mr. Weaver, I couldn't get you, and I know you were a phone call away, I should have tried that, but Tammy, I appreciate you coming in, it takes a lot of courage to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and just if you guys have any type of, you know, way to help me to be able to get the children into, I, like I said, I would prefer James A. Long for the reasons that I mentioned, I would really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, like, that one more item that is not a consent agenda, uh, public speaking forum, and it has to do with the Francis Fire Department School Bus Training. Would you want to come forward, sir? Jason Matchit?
I just want to read this letter real quick, and then I'll be out of your way.
Okay.
Thank you all for having me at short notice.
Do you know Deek Matchit?
I do, he's my favorite uncle.
Okay.
Um, Dear Putnam School, wow, okay. Dear Putnam County School Superintendent and Board, our department is requesting a school bus be loaned to us for the use of training our personnel and other local crews. This training will help prepare personnel in the event of a school bus accident as it pertains to accessing and treating patients on the bus. With your help, our training can be successful and productive in preparation for an emergency before the school year begins. This project will provide many benefits to our community and local fire and EMS organizations. We appreciate your attention to our quest and ask for your support in allowing us the use of a surplus school bus for a special training session. It is important our crew, along with other agencies, be prepared so that together we may provide the best service. I've met with, um, I've met with Mr. Simmons...
Mr. Simons, Rodney Simons.
Simmons sounds good.
Yeah, I'm very sorry about that. And, and Mr. McClellan discussed some of the logistical ideas and what we were trying to obtain, and they do have a bus that they can loan us for the training, and I'm just trying to go through the formalities to make sure, and I'm sorry about the timing here. We want to do this drill on August the tenth, which is the second Monday of next month in the evening time. We want to turn the bus on its side, put some kids on the bus, give them some injuries, and let our fire and EMS personnel sort them out and remove them off the school bus.
Let me ask Ms. Chriswell something. Do you remember, I know you were active in it at the time, when we took an old bus and we had the life-flight helicopters take, we triaged to the high school, to the hospital...
We've done this in the past with...
We let them practice.
With working with fire departments, and it's, it's a very important part of their training, it's for the safety of the children.
You guys turned that bus force over on Silver Lake Road.
Yes, we did.
And we had gotten in trouble for not knowing if I'm in the hospital when all these patients showed up at the hospital. But anyways, I, I do remember, we had, it was an excellent opportunity for training, and, um, you know, what really reminded me about this, and it's been on my mind for a long time, you know, that the school bus accident in Melrose could have been a lot worse, and I really think that if the Board and the Superintendent are okay with us moving forward with this, then I can coordinate with the Transportation Department, and we can move this training forward. I know, you know, I'll be making a decision today, but I am asking that we are kind of on a time limit, or time...
I will say that, that Mr. Simons and I have talked about this, and because they have a bus available and the time situation, we, we can surplus one of the old buses we were gonna surplus anyway, and give them the bus at that time, but they need this, like, immediately, because they've got this training set up, so we thought it would be good for him to come and tell you about it.
But we don't need to approve it.
No, I'm just telling you that Mr. Simons and I have, Mr. Simons and I have moved forward on this, it's kind of an inter-agency cooperation. But we just wanted you to know that this had come up.
Yes, we want the public, we want the public and we want the school board to know what's going on and support the idea, because we, it's a team effort.
Well, that's, Madam Superintendent, that's why I would like to see Mr. Simons get with Mr. Weaver and develop that scenario similar to what we had before.
Sure.
Because you do learn when you have to cut out the top of a bus, and you have to pull, you have to find out what's wrong. Even the paramedics learn.
In nineteen ninety-eight, we did this drill last time, there were no emergency exits on top of the roof. The bus that's available this time for the training, they're on top of the roof, which changes our strategy and our plans, you know, tool, new tools out there, new techniques, and we really want to get our hands in there and practice this, but we just, we would like to ask for your support.
Yeah.
I appreciate the permission from the Superintendent, and I'd like to go back to my office today and be able to say that we're moving forward with this project and go ahead and smooth the schedule, so.
Great.
Hey, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
I volunteer David Buckles as a, as a victim right there.
I'm not really...
Yeah, so just say y'all, put him under the bus.
Please.
Yeah, put him under the bus, yeah, yeah, that's where it needs to go.
I want to come watch.
I've been under the bus plenty.
Put Buckles under the bus.
See, I have three more public requests, but they'll have to do with the Mr. Alveney's incident on the charts, so only on the agenda, so we'll hold those until that time, and then I had the request from Mr. Levine, and when we go into Personnel Matters, I'll have him come up. So, uh, going on the consent agenda, I would like to see if Board Members have any items they would like to pull.
None here?
D five.
D five?
No, I don't.
Okay, and I have none.
I want to ask a board member to pull L one. Don't mind.
Okay, just a second. L one.
Just D five.
From Mr. Douglas.
Can I pull something from the audience? E two, my allocations that I sent?
E two, you certainly may.
Thank you.
E two.
E two.
E two. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented, minus D five, E two, and L one.
I second.
Wait, hold on a minute. We're gonna have to also pull, you pulled, you pulled off, we've not got to pull.
F one.
F one.
F one.
And F one.
Okay, that's it. Yeah, Mr. Levine, okay.
And F one.
All right, and F one. Read those out again.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda, minus D one, E two, F one, L one.
D five.
D five, I'm sorry.
Not fixed asset, at least.
D five, correction, D five.
And what was the, besides L one, there was, there was-
There's D five.
E two.
D five, E two, F one.
F one.
L one.
Okay.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say five, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. All right, first up would be the D five.
I just, I didn't get a chance to call Mr. Getchel. I didn't, it's under Mr. Roach, but I figured you would be the one. I just kinda was wanting to get a timeline. I know this is something that every, every time we pay rent on something, I just think, oh, gosh, when is, you know, is it something that we could talk about a timeline as far as moving that warehouse? That's all.
It's on the-
This is a lease for a year, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And so it's not-
It's the same one we've renewed for the past four years.
Right.
Obviously out the old Florida Furniture Warehouse.
Yeah.
It's Matthews deal there on?
No, it's out of the state.
We haven't been there for about five years.
Gone to the-
We're at the old Florida Furniture Warehouse. If you haven't been out there, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful facility. It's still to the art.
Very nice.
For us to build what we got out there, we need about $4 million.
We've talked about it before, and I, and I have said to you all that unfortunately, the gentleman that owns it does not live not only in Putnam County, but not in the state of Florida.
Texas.
Which is wonderful for him, I guess, but it means that the money that we're spending to have space for a warehouse, that money that are taxpayer dollars go out of the state of Florida.
Yes, ma'am.
So my ultimate goal in, in our five-year plan with our construction is to build our own warehouse on the property that we have in East Palatka at the old Browning Pierce, because eventually our goal is to have maintenance and warehouse and purchasing and facilities. Everything will be on that campus, because it's just a block from Highway 17, which means easy delivery. There's no-
Right.
Houses or children to go through, and it's just a safer place, and it's a better use for that property since we will never use it for a school again. However, construction of a warehouse is expensive, and it's kind of down on our list. It is on one of our top five, but it will take us, you know, over the next five years to complete everything on our list. But I just want you to be aware, we have to have warehouse space currently. We're renting that space. It's probably the only and the best available for us at this time. But ultimately, our goal is to have our own so that we don't have to pay rent.
And the rent would, would, it's a lot cheaper than the, you know, the interest that you'd be paying on that, that money right there. We're about making that back, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I just was kinda wanting a timeline. I know it was in our five-year plan, so I know we have the transportation, we have Miller, Milton, Bernie.
And we have Interlocken Elementary High School on the back burner coming up.
Okay.
Renovation Campus Two.
Okay, so it's, it's on the list, but-
It is, yes, ma'am.
It's gotta be, I just was trying to get an idea of one year or five years or-
A lot of it, you know, if we could get truly funded from the state with real PICO dollars, like we used to get, I'm going back in the day, maybe I'm still dreaming, but if we could get, you know, about three, four million dollars, that would make a huge difference.
They took our money, so there, there's not a lot, you know, a lot of people don't realize the money that we get is categorical. That means it comes to us in categories, and I'm simplifying it, Rhonda. Rhonda could do a better job of explaining it, but, but if we get textbooks money, we can't spend it on anything but textbooks. If we, you know, capital outlay, you spend on capital outlay. Now, I know that you can spend some on buses and computers, but you have money for that, so why would you spend your capital outlay dollars on that? You can't spend it on anything else. So we, we are very careful and look at what the district as a whole needs, and certainly our warehouse serves us well, but it would be much better for us to have it on our own property where we're not having to pay rent.
Absolutely.
And it is a goal, but we have school and other goals that come before that, so, you know, you have to balance it because you can't do everything, and because, gosh, it's been, what, 98 or maybe 2,000 or so, that they took our money. And I don't know what they did with it, but we haven't gotten it, and therefore it really puts a damper on the projects we can do.
Right, okay. Well, thank you for the-
Did I hear you call for a question?
Uh, yes. Approval of D five?
Okay, Ms. Cummings has called for a question on the vote to approve D five. I've got some of, got a motion from Terry Wright.
Second.
Second from Ms. Crawford. Any comment? All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Let's go next to E two, Personnel allocations.
On page two, number 2.6, I've had a request of a change. We had been going to delete one specialist and add one supervisor. School Food Service has asked instead to delete one specialist and add one coordinator, so I'm asking you to make that change here. On 2.6, just change supervisor to coordinator, and that's the only change.
Okay.
Superintendent Chriswell, is that your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Make a motion to approve item E two.
Will we have a motion to approve item E two?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. All right, that brings us to F one, Personnel Matters.
Is that me?
Yes, sir. That'd be you again, Mark.
Mark Levine, Levine and Stivers Law Firm out of Tallahassee, Florida. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Madam Superintendent, as most of you know, this is not my first school board meeting in my career, but I will have to tell you this. It is so much more of a pleasure to be in front of your school board than some of the ones I have to deal with down south of Orlando. To come here and to see the support you give to your local community for your fire safety, for your children and your students, and this great outreach program for some of the students in your community is really overwhelming. It's hard to see that again anymore anywhere we're going. I am here on a very serious matter. I'm not here to debate issues with you today. Some of you know our law firm. We've actually represented the district in some, I think, corporate-type matters, but we also represent the teachers and the support staff personnel, and that's where you probably have seen me mostly. My partner, Ron Stowers, did some work for y'all recently, and so he said this in his regards. But I'm not here to debate the merits of this particular personnel action. It's been recommended by your superintendent. I got the file late Friday. I spent some time with it over the weekend, and first thing yesterday morning, I was in contact with the superintendent's office and the board attorney's office to see if we could come to some resolution that did not require me to make the trip. But I am here. I have not spoken with the superintendent's office about it, and the board attorney and I have not talked about the merits of it. The, if you, I don't know what information you have other than the recommendation, but the information I had included all of Ms. Kirkley's evaluations since 2005. And Ms. Kirkley's here, and she's given me the authority to discuss with you candidly at a public meeting, health issues. So I'm not violating any HIPAA rule, and she's here because that is an important consideration to what I'm gonna ask you to do today. Her evaluations are all good until last year. She started having incidences of behavior, six, I think, reprimands that have been documented by her principal to the superintendent, all dealing with the way she speaks to people unprofessionally. There's been no allegation that she has harmed a child or done anything physical, or that she's a, a threat to children or anything of that nature. She is ESC certified, and she, she works at the school. The reprimands are in a list that the principal was kind enough to furnish the superintendent. And interesting, when you get a chance at some point, if you need to, to read that, is she clearly says that she has exhibited a pattern of behavior. Now, the reason that I'm here is that for the better part of my career, when a, a teacher or a support staff person has been recommended for termination, and there is some indication that there might be something in regards to their health going on, it comes to me. I guess I'm sort of the doctor who's not the doctor. I do a lot of work with physicians, evaluations, things of that nature, and what I'm here to tell you is, is that this is a classic case of something that's happening with Ms. Kirkley. I had the opportunity on the way over to stop on Interstate 10 at a rest stop and actually do a phone consult with a psychiatrist who I'd sent the information to. And he's indicated to me that he believes there needs to be some testing done. She is on an antidepressant, but it's been prescribed and managed by her family practice physician. And I think family practice physicians are wonderful and are needed in our society, but I do not think they need to be managing and prescribing psychotropic drugs. I believe that is to be left up to the people who are trained to do that. Mrs. Kirkley is prepared to enter into treatment, to be evaluated, to be tested, so that we can determine if there is something medically going on with her that has caused this behavior, which again, if you had the entire file that I had in front of me, you would obviously say, something is not right here. The woman has had perfect evaluations, and then all of a sudden this one issue, and it continues to occur every two or three months. The district, to its credit, has tried counseling with her and things of that nature. My position is, is that she needs to be evaluated. She is a 10-month employee. She's not scheduled to go back for a month. It's not costing the district. I think the superintendent's recommendation is a bit premature. Our law firm is prepared to work with her starting tomorrow morning with her health carrier, to have her attested, assessed, and then I would like to then meet with the superintendent and her counsel to see if we can come to some other conclusion rather than termination. Terminating an employee from any job, and I don't know whether you folks on the board employ people or are employed, but you have to know whether either of those things, that termination of an employee is a very, very terrible thing. It not only causes a stigma for the employee, but it disrupts their entire life and potentially causes financial ruin. Ms. Kirkley's husband is a retired disabled law enforcement officer. She is 59 years old. She has a minor son at home, and it is our position that the superintendent's recommendation ought to be voted down today or tabled, so that we have the opportunity. And I promise you, our law firm will work diligently to have this testing done, so that we can have an intelligent discussion with the superintendent about what appropriate discipline might be available, or whether discipline should be available at all, or whether with proper treatment, Ms. Kirkley can go back and continue to be a good employee of this school district. At this point in time, it doesn't cost anybody anything. If you take the superintendent's recommendation, it's gonna cost a lot of money, because myself and the board attorney, our law firms are gonna be at it. I think it's a bit premature to do that, and I would like the opportunity to try to work it through and see what we can do. It's what you would do if you were the employer. You can't look at this record and not go to yourself and say, something is not right here. This is not an incident where she grabbed a student and threw him out a window. It's not an incident where she did one particular thing. It's a pattern of behavior as said so by her own principal. So I implore you today to please deny the superintendent's recommendation for termination, and I promise you what we're gonna do, I'm on the record, and I'll swear to it under oath if you want me to.
Mark, can I ask a question now?
Yes, sir.
I spoke to Ms. Kirkley back at the end of school ceremonies, and she apprised me of these situations. I guess my, my question is, she, she is not a certified teacher.
So she's paraprofessional, sir?
A paraprofessional.
Correct.
And she wound up being moved out of a, a assigned area that she was comfortable in into different assigned areas that she probably was not, did not have the right experience to do. But that's, I just wanted to make sure that's correct. She's not a certified teacher.
No, sir, she's not. But you know, the point you just raised is interesting, because any physician will tell you that there are certain medical issues that people suffer, all of us in this room, some of us undiagnosed, by the way, that a, a change in your circumstance for what you do for a living can cause aberrant things to occur in what you are being reassigned to do. I don't know the answer to that question. There are professionals who get paid a lot more than, than I do to, to make those assert, well, I don't know, in today's medical world, that may not be true, but that to make those decisions. I would like to have the data. Your superintendent has always been absolutely wonderful to work with, and I think if we have the data, we can sit down and discuss intelligently what might be the most appropriate thing to do with Ms. Kirkley. If we can't agree at that time, then we have the process that we can go through, and we all know what that process is. We've been through it 100, 1,000 times.
Next question is Mr. Douglas. This has been a recommendation of superintendent who holds great latitude in all personnel recommendations. If the board were to table or vote against anything on here for, without good cause, then we're liable. Is that correct?
Mm-mm. I just wanna make sure the board members know that the first that I've heard of it, that any of the board members have heard of that I know of, or that the administration has heard of this potential medical issue was yesterday. And my understanding from talking to Mr. Levine is that he agreed, and please correct me if I'm misrepresenting what you said, that the district has followed all the procedures leading up to this time, and that there's nothing that the administration has done that would suggest that they have faltered in following the procedures. Is that right?
Well, let me clarify. What, you had, you had said to me that your analysis was that the district had followed all of the procedures. I told you that I was so new to the file that I wasn't going to debate that issue with you today, and did not disagree with that today. I mean, I can't give that up at a later date for a procedural issue if we get into a legal fight. What I'm here today to try to do is to stop a legal fight. I'm trying to stop a legal fight, get an evaluation, so that this board will have the knowledge based on the superintendent's recommendation to do the right thing. In, in terms of the chair, the chair's question, the board can vote the superintendent's recommendation down, or they can table the recommendation. It's a good cause issue, but it's not a good cause that's liable to the board, and I've represented plenty of superintendents in your same situation, and you know that to be the answer. All I'm asking is, is that we, we get, we get some time here to look at it. Why do you wanna fire somebody if something's wrong with them that can be corrected? The objective of human relations is to relate to human beings. That means taking people and under a disciplinary procedure, and your HR director will tell you this, is not to punish people, it's to make them better at their jobs. This woman had, I mean, we could talk about progressive discipline and all of that, but that's for a later date. I want a month to have her assessed and evaluated. So I think then Ms. Chriswell has a better understanding of what her recommendation ought to be. She does not take these recommendations lightly, I'm sure. My partner, Mr. Stowers, knows her well and says she's an absolute bend-over-backward pleasure person to deal with. I'm sorry you don't know about the medical. I got it Friday. It's my job to understand this stuff. I called you first thing Monday morning. If y'all had been here Friday, I'd have called you, but nobody was here Friday. I mean, I couldn't even reach Ms. Whitaker Friday. She was gone too. So, I mean, I was out there all by myself.
Board members, any questions?
Well, I, I just don't know how I can vote on anything without knowing what, what she, what she was even reprimanded for. I mean, I have no knowledge. All I know of is the superintendent's recommendation, and I know that there's-
We work through, through our Human Resources Department, and I'll have Ms. Decibella's come up and speak to it. Certainly, we care not only about our children, but our employees, and we don't ever want to do anything that hurts an employee. Most of our employees live right here in Putnam County. They support Putnam County. We support Putnam County. We're the largest employer. So all of those are issues we deal with every day, and we don't do anything lightly. We have followed all of board policy, the union contract, and state law in this issue, but we are not medical people. So it is not for us to determine if there's a medical issue there, and she would have the option, my understanding, Ms. Decibella's, correct me if I'm wrong, to choose to take medical leave if she thought there was a real issue, and why she waited this long and just didn't go ahead and take medical leave when, I'm assuming that could have been done. And so we, we are trying to move forward with the situation that is really best for the students, the staff, and the school, because we have to look at them as well as the employee. And we feel- And we feel like we've covered all our bases and done everything we could. To go in it further in a public forum makes me uncomfortable for the current employee. It's just not something I would want done to anybody. And I would prefer, though, that Debbie give you a little bit of information. And I just want you to know, we've done everything correctly, and we have this option. And unfortunately, these are decisions we have to make with employees. We have sixteen hundred employees, and every day we have issues. You don't even know the magnitude of the problems we have, that we solve and we work with. We work with employees, we work with doctors, whomever. This was a little bit different situation, and we still followed all the protocol. Now, is protocol perfect? Not necessarily. And certainly in her case, I'm sure that she would prefer to have this time. However, Mr. Levine, we don't have thirty days. Our teachers and employees come back on the tenth for training, and then officially they start on the twelfth. So we really have less than thirty days. And the issue here is, now we're holding up a school who has lost an employee, whose job nobody is there to do, and all of our schools are short employees anyway. We never have enough employees to get the job done at a school. So it puts us in a bind, because the school can't move forward and hire someone. But I'm gonna let Debbie talk to you for just a minute, and then I'll let you all ask questions.
I just would caution the HR director to be mindful of the confidentiality rules that surround employee files. If Mr. Levine chooses to disclose confidential information, that's a decision between him and his client. He has not given that permission to you, to my understanding.
And that was going to be my question, Mr. Douglas. I'm not really sure that there is a lot that I can share, other than to say that progressive discipline was followed. The employee did have the opportunity to work with many staff members at her current assignment to try to improve the situations that had been brought to her attention by her administrator. Be happy to sit down with any of you individually and let you look at that information, but I'm just not comfortable, as Mr. Douglas said, to share specifics, 'cause I don't wanna speak on Ms. Kirkley's behalf and betray any trust that she has in us as well.
Debbie, how many years has she been an employee?
Mr. Douglas?
Eleven.
Eleven.
She was hired in two thousand one.
Mr. Attorney, would this be an appropriate situation where we could discuss this, if we tabled it and discussed it in executive session, since it would be possible?
I'm not aware of a basis that would allow us to discuss that in an executive session, unless we were being litigated.
If there's possible litigation.
If Mr. Levine files a lawsuit, we could certainly.
Here's my next question. I've never seen a principal that had enough help. I've never seen them have enough help at the beginning of the year, during the year, or at the end of the year. And I think Ms. Crawford and Ms. Cummings were coming to a point that if there were outstanding circumstances that no one had thought of, you know, she may be entitled to early retirement, or, you know, medical benefits with social security, who knows? I don't know, but I would, I think that's a good question you brought up.
That would have to be determined by a doctor.
By a doctor, not us.
And again, we don't do this lightly. This is never easy for us when we have to deal with these issues. It's not fun. We try to always follow, again, like I said, anything that's in our union contract, the board policy and state law. And we will do whatever your pleasure is at this point. I still say we've done everything we're supposed to do, and I still say at some point, the employee could have chosen to ask for medical leave and never did, so.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, just where I said, I don't think there's a question at all that we, the staff didn't do the right thing. I mean, I think that's perfectly clear, that the right processes were followed, the right steps were taken. However, if there is a underlying medical condition, and mental and emotional medical conditions are stigmatized in our society, in our community, and oftentimes, there's a shame factor that's associated with it, there's oftentimes fear that's associated with it. And so, in light of recent information that we just got yesterday, I guess, right, Charlie? You heard about the potential medical condition yesterday? I would be inclined to extend some sort of grace period for her to be evaluated. I think that's fair-minded. But here, this too, it's not because I think we've done something wrong or inappropriate procedurally. That is not the reason. It is because of this medical potential, nobody's a doctor here, I don't reckon, all right? This potential medical condition that could exist. I would feel, I just feel like maybe we need to give some time to see what's there.
Ms. Decubellis, is it too late for the employee to ask for medical leave? Have we passed that point?
No, ma'am.
And could you tell us, if she does that, where does that leave us as a district, and where does that leave the school minus that employee? And I would assume that then, after the medical leave, if it was determined by the doctor and whomever that she could return, it wouldn't necessarily be to the same school or placement.
It would depend upon what type of leave she chose to take. If she took an extended personal leave, that can be for up to a two-year window, that would allow for the school itself to go ahead and advertise to fill that vacancy. If the employee chose to take FMLA and had doctor's paperwork to allow for that usage of FMLA, that would guarantee that employee the opportunity to go back to that same position at the school, so the school would still be without support in that particular role.
Well, that's fourteen years in the district. Am I correct on that?
Since two thousand one, yes, sir.
If she's in sole support of a fifteen-year-old student that I suppose attends our schools, is that correct, Mr. Levine?
I believe that to be correct. Yes, sir.
I'll just have to wait and see what the board makes of anything, a motion.
Let me clarify just a couple. Mr. Wright, thank you for your comments. I think they're appropriate. I do want you to understand, as a lawyer, I cannot agree with Charlie today that the superintendent has followed all the procedures and dotted the i's and crossed the t's, 'cause I don't know. But I'm not asserting that today. I'm not here to argue the merits. Mr. Wright makes the point, if there is something going on here, you need to know that in your determination of how you meet out discipline or whether discipline's appropriate. And I'm sure that the superintendent would like to know that. I have to tell you, I'm involved in a case in Hillsborough County where the school district's council has asserted that the superintendent has no knowledge of why she wrote a termination letter on a teacher. Now, I find that abhorrent. And they will not require her to testify at the hearing coming up at the end of July that she doesn't know why she terminated this teacher. She has no knowledge of it. You're fortunate, your superintendent does pay attention. The interesting thing is, though, under Florida law, your superintendent is charged with recommending to you. It is your decision to fire or hire. How it is that you could make a determination as to Ms. Kirkley, or any other personnel matter in regards to termination, without having documentation in front of you, I don't know. And that's an issue I'll address with Charlie at some point, maybe. But at this juncture, all I want is some time. I can't tell you that I'll advise her to take a leave, but I need at least a week or so that I can find a doctor and figure out what the timeframe is. I do not wish to put this district in any peril, and neither does Ms. Kirkley. You didn't know it was a medical problem until yesterday morning, simply because, one, nobody in the district staff looked at the file and said, "Gee whiz, what's going on here? Something might be wrong here." Now, that's something I do for a living. I don't expect your HR people to do that, but it's something sometimes I have the opportunity to bring to somebody's attention. I immediately focus on it, and if Ms. Kirkley truly is suffering under some medical condition, I would guarantee you she doesn't know it, because many people in this room are and don't know it. We all are from time to time. So it's just the way it is. I want some time to deal with it, and I'll try to work this thing out. But you have to do what you gotta do.
With more questions, what's your pleasure?
Would it be appropriate to table this, then? Give it, in the light of receiving more information? Is that an appropriate, Charlie?
It should be.
You may table.
Just the one item, not the whole personnel.
No, just this item, just the termination.
In an effort to conserve any legal fees and things that may come about, I do agree that if we can have some kind of consensus before this termination takes place, trying to be conservative with taxpayer dollars would be my goal. So I feel like that would be a wise decision to table this, and then...
Ms. Crawford?
I agree.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, I move we table this termination matter until more information can come to the board.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, from Ms. Cummings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Can I seek clarification? Are we only tabling the one item on the personnel matters?
Yes, that's it.
So you will then approve the remaining personnel matters?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the remaining items listed under F-1.
Second?
Motion second to approve the remaining personnel items under F-1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Moving right along to consent agenda. We had no items to pull, so I will entertain a motion.
We've already been doing that, David.
We've already done it. That's right. We already did that.
We're on L-1.
We're on L-1.
It's out of practice a little bit.
I haven't been a chairman in a while, so go ahead.
This is a matter I had a question about.
Okay.
Okay. We got that. Go ahead, Charlie. Board members, I just would caution you as to a couple of paragraphs in this contract with Omni Alert, and I'm not too familiar, maybe the superintendent can help us shed some light, but it appears that this corporation assists the district in sending out mass alerts, which is a good thing. But because of certain federal laws, and the Do Not Call Registry, and recent lawsuits that I'm told are now going on in central Florida against a school district, because a parent had, or multiple parents had asked to be removed, and inadvertently they were not. They kept receiving the messages, so now we're in a class action lawsuit, I believe, where the school district is being sued. So with that background, I wanna make sure that we're protected as a board to the greatest degree that we can, and paragraph eight does not allow that protection that we need. The indemnification agreement is only serving Omni Alert and gives us, the board and the district, no protection, so that if they mess up and we are sued because of their mistake, they need to be on the hook, and they're not.
Well, we currently have a program that we're using, and I'll let Charles Jenkins, who is our executive director of our IT department, I'll let him speak to that, because he and his staff have done extensive research on looking for the best program and the cheapest program, well, the most cost-effective, I hate to say cheapest. Certainly, we wanna save money, but we want to have a good program. And we currently already have one that the numbers are in, and when we do alert now messages about all kinds of things from the school system, we have, I have, said during the message, you know, if you are receiving these and don't want to receive them, call this number, and we'll remove your name. With this new system, we're gonna make the parents sign up and give us the number they want called, and if they don't sign up, they're not gonna get the calls. If they don't give us their number on the form that we're gonna give them, then they're not gonna get the call. We're just gonna eliminate what we have currently and start all over with what we feel is a better program. But I'll let Charles talk a little bit about it.
Does that satisfy the...
That definitely helps. I mean, opt-in system versus what it sounds like now we have is opt-out system. That's good. That helps us.
We're legally liable if we give unwanted phone calls on...
Correct. So even though somebody may opt in under the new system, and they wanna get out later and for some inadvertent reason, or, let's say, the servers at Omni Alert are hacked, and parents' telephone numbers or kids' information is released inadvertently, and the school district is sued because of it, this contract leaves us in a very exposed and vulnerable position. So I just would like some time to have an opportunity to negotiate with Omni Alert and see if we can work out some of these clauses.
But the board needs to know, we've had a program like this for years and years and years, and we're just looking for a better one. Just so you know, it's not like this is something new and we've never done, just so you know.
Now, if you're getting unwanted phone calls...
You know what? Well, I've got to tell you, it is a sad day when parents don't want information about what's going on in schools. There is nothing overt, or covert, or negative, or nasty in any manner about the calls that we make. It is information only. It is not about children's grades. It is not about anything nefarious. It is strictly information that we want parents to have, because here's the way we have to look at it. Yes, we now have a district Facebook page, we have a webpage, we have Twitter, we have ways that people can get in touch with us, and you all received today at your spot all the ways that people can get information. Everybody doesn't listen to the radio, everybody doesn't get the newspaper. And then we have people complain, "Well, I didn't know. Y'all didn't tell me that was going on." We're looking for ways to get the information out to parents and community, and this is the best way, and we've been using it for a long time. We're trying to find a better system that's more cost-effective. And Charles and his staff have worked really hard to do that. So I'll let y'all ask your questions to him.
I don't think that's a question.
We don't have any questions on this. There's no issue. The issue is simply with the liability the board has. That's it. That's very narrow.
We agree.
I think this sounds great.
And I guess in our...
The attorney just needs to clarify any type of liability we may have.
Well, what this contract does, though, and I'd like to speak towards it, is it's much more flexible than the one we have currently. If we don't use this one, the one we have currently will stay in place, and it's inflexible. There's no opt-out of it. The person has to call in and find the right person, and ask us to go in and physically remove their name from Nefex District servers. This contract, though, actually has a spot where they sign up, they can tell us we want a text message to this phone number, we want an email to this email address, or we want a phone call, you know, coming to this phone number here.
So they don't even have to get a phone call?
No, it can be a text message, it can be an email, it could be a cell phone, it could be the house phone. It could be all four. They sign up for exactly what they want in the system, or they get nothing.
We are for that a hundred percent. We need Mr. Douglas to check it out.
If he's got a question, then he needs to make the call, so. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
As soon as possible.
I move that we table this particular item until the attorney can return with some clarification on contract.
We have a motion to table.
Now, yes, if we don't...
Hang on, just a minute.
We got the beginning of August starting, and there's gonna be a lot of calls going out. And if we use, the calls have to go out some way. If we use the Blackboard Connect, which we're using now, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars for the yearly agreement.
You work on this all night, won't you?
I don't think...
You don't need to table it. I think Charles will work with Mr. Douglas and get that situation worked out, so that it's satisfactory to Mr. Douglas, but at least we don't have to wait two weeks for the next board meeting to go ahead and purchase once Mr. Douglas is satisfied.
Charlie could work with Charles, Charles and Charlie, anyway, and get this resolved in a matter of thirty minutes.
Nobody's against the program. Nobody's against it.
I understand that.
We just need this one issue clarified from a legal point of view, that it may expose us in a legal way. That's it. That's all we need.
And I understand that.
The risk is that if they do not agree to change their contract...
Are we ready to be liable for a lawsuit concerning this situation?
Then we just have to move ahead, understanding our liability. At least we understand it.
My position is, we're there.
Already liable with what we have right now.
Yeah, we're there right now.
This is better than what we have now. That's, we're trying to change it, so we won't have that issue.
I'm optimistic that Omni Alert will do it, or there'll be a short-term contract, maybe.
And you're right, this is a boilerplate. It's open for debate, so.
I hope, I'm so.
If it isn't, we'll have to call an emergency meeting and deal with it.
So if they do not take out, I mean, why would they take liability? That would be, I don't think, I don't see that just happening.
What I would hope for is what's called a mutual indemnification clause, so that if we're gonna indemnify them for something we do, that they could be on the hook for it, that it's a two-way street. That they indemnify us if it's something that they mess up on.
That's rational.
Could you make a motion that we move forward to purchase this after Attorney Douglas has all of his issues settled with his company?
Mr. Chairman, I remove my previous motion, and I move that we accept this contract, given clarification on the indemnity issues that our attorney's gonna seek to clear up.
I second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
I move motion for... Okay, moving right along. My goodness, I'd like to, next one would be, that was L-1, so let's go with... My goodness, I'd like to, next one would be, that was L1, so let's go with.
Do we have, uh, emergency items?
Under old business.
Emergency items?
We got to go to old business first.
No, you need to go to emergency session.
Okay, emergency session, let me pull up. We've got some additional items, all of you have those, we have some. We're in an emergency session.
There you go.
All right, we'll do that right, so you're happy. Okay, first is consent agenda item E2, 2015.
No, just, that was, that was just in, we only have one.
Okay.
And one?
I see it now, I'm looking at additional. A letter of agreement.
Yep.
731 dash 16 dash 002 with Sarah Consulting. This is for Nefex Incorporated to provide legislative network services for Nefex member districts. Justifiable explanation, time-sensitive.
Mr. Chairman, so moved?
Second.
And a second, uh, second from Ms. Cummings. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That takes us out of emergency session. Takes us out of emergency session, we're back.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remove the item O2 from the discussion.
Okay.
Second?
Motion of second. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we have, speaking, we have, I'm not certain that, that it's really necessary, but unless the board feels like they want to hear from all four people, are you, the superintendent was going to gather information for the board.
I have that information from all of our band directors, who are, all had very positive things to say, rather than giving, giving you all that I received. I can read to you and then make available copies of everything I received, but let me tell you, first of all, that they, they, there was nothing but positive, wonderful things to say about all that Mr. Albanese does for our band directors, from his guidance and leadership, the growth of the programs across the school district because of what he does, his working with individual band students, as well as the group as a whole. He acts as a liaison between the schools, he conducts classes, he models for the band directors, he observes in classes, he prepares for concerts. He, he puts together all of the county music, musical programs, the Spring Extravaganza, the County Choral Festival, the Jazz and Drums Under the Stars, et cetera, et cetera. I could give you a list a mile long, and that's what I have here, and I can make that, these copies available to you at any time. It's nothing but positive, and they are here today and want to speak to this, and that certainly, of, of course, is up to you, but they all have wonderful things to say about Mr. Albanese and all that he does for the program. And you know, over the years, we have continually heard, they are the one group that has continually come to the board for help with a lot of different things, and certainly, band is just one of the many things we offer to students, but this is a group that you hear from quite often. This particular contract started with the previous administration. We have continued it, but of course, it comes to you yearly for your approval. It was pulled by Ms. Jorgensen at the last board meeting, and she said that she would like to hear from the band director. So I got the feedback from all of them, and like I said, it's all positive and great, and I, I can, I'll make copies for you, but I've got pages and pages here. If you care to hear from them today, then they are here and ready to speak and tell you everything that they wrote.
You're still so inclined that you want to come speak? I've got Wanda, Melissa, it looks like, Bert, and Alfredo, Wilfredo, excuse me. Got Alfredo on my name, I'm thinking, I'm thinking Shrimp Alfredo or something. Would you, if you want to come up and speak, you're welcome to all come up at one time and, and do however you want to do. I think you're not going to have any problem.
And I'll be the meantime keeper.
You're going to be the mean one? Hi, I'm Wanda Ruckwitz. I am the band president of the QI Roberts Junior/Senior High School. I want to tell you that my son is 38 years old. This is my second term through this school system. And Mr. Albanese has always been there. Even though my son could never play, he can't do it, his, his daughter can, okay? And Mr. Albanese has taught her so much. And when Mr. Helms, who was our assistant principal, was moved to another school, and then he came back a year later, and after Mr. Albanese working with Mr. Hartley to make this band, he was, he was astonished. He says, "I can't believe this is the same band, but please, Mr. Albanese is the best." And I was with him when he was in IHS, and my son never played, but I also went. And I was a chaperone, and I didn't have a student. But please, please, we have to have Mr. Albanese, and thank you.
Thank you.
As, as my grandmother said, I am a band student at QI, and when Mr. Albanese would come to help us, he was a very powerful asset to the bands, and he would help us on things that we were having trouble with, that Mr. Hartley couldn't get across to us. He would do it in ways that would click in our minds. He was, he was fun, and he also got what he needed to get across. And if we were to lose him, it would be very hard in order to have the bands be where they, where they are now without him. Thank you.
Thank you.
She is amazing.
She was very good. Never seen her play.
Good evening, Wilfredo Irisari, band director at Interlockin High School. Alfredo, sure. And I'd like to speak both personal and professional, of course. He helps us, and this is one of the districts where we get personal training as directors because of him, which is very important. We usually have to go miles and miles to different counties or states to get training for music, and we have him here to help us specifically with our programs. And we see him throughout the years, and just everything that he does, obviously, with the many concerts and programs that we put on for the communities has been fantastic. And the growth that I've seen personally as an educator and the other groups has been fantastic in the past couple of years. On a personal note, he was my band director when I was in high school, and he is the reason I'm here. And I'm here just to support him as he supported me throughout the years, so.
And he has a jazz band that I think you all have heard, that is absolutely amazing, and we'll be using you again real soon, come September. I'll be getting with you.
Mr. Albanese travels here from Palm Coast. I think we get quite a deal with him personally. He helps our students as well as our directors. He approaches the students if they need help, and as well as the directors, helps them direct. He knows the different passages to go by, he's been there. He's got the skills to get our students where they need to be. He's just, he's so personal, not only to the students but the directors. He's just phenomenal, and we can't afford to lose him. Just thank you so much.
And the board, I just would like to remind you, it is a part-time position, it's not full-time, just so you know.
Thank you.
I'm Bert Bernreuter, I traveled here from Jacksonville, Florida to come talk about Mr. Albanese. I've known him since college days, I was a fraternity brother with him. I, we both started out in St. John's County together. I was a band director there. I left the profession to get an MBA, but we stayed in contact. I've kind of vicariously lived my life through Nick, because there's things about it that I miss. And, but I can tell you this, from, from my standpoint now, all I can talk about is empirical evidence. My wife, she, she is, has played solo and ensemble, she plays piano and has helped students there. I've tutored students at, for him at times, and, and I've, I've become personal friends with his students, and I've noticed the relationship of the students with Mr. Albanese. It's a, it's one of, of, of an extraordinary relationship that, that Mr. Albanese helps students with, not only with their music, but, but in all parts of their life, when they're going through whatever they're going through and, and whatever. When I went to Mr. Albanese's banquet when he retired, they were just always talking about, we always went to the band room because that's where we felt safe. That's where we could get help. That's, it was, it was an extraordinary situation. Here you have a person who has, who has an extraordinary talent on his, as far as music concerned. He cares for people, but then he has an extraordinary ability to relate to, to the students. And he, and, and especially students in this, in this community, as you've heard from everything empirically talking, there's been nothing but praise here. As a former colleague, I still go around, I, I've, with my MBA, I've gone on to do business, I'm now retired, but, but I still have contacts with the University of North Florida, and then Mr. Albanese and I went up and wanted to give our congratulations to the director of bands there. And the director of bands says, "We'll come in from you, speaking to Mr. Albanese." That's a compliment. This is, this is, this is Professor Banz at, at the University of North Florida, and that, that band program just, I mean, when I hear that band, it's just crazy. Crazy good, I mean. And, and for, and that came from the words of, of the director of bands there. So, and, but from an MBA point of view, when you, when I look at a budget and what I want to invest in, I look at rate of return, I look at, and I look at risk and reward. Well, when you look at risk or to reward, you can see there's no risk here. He's a proven asset. When you look at rate of return, you got yourself a deal. You, you, I mean, he sits on so many boards of so many things, and you've got him for a part-time salary? My goodness, that's, that's a deal.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move we have.
I just have one quick, Terry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Uh, Phil, Ms. Superintendent, you may be able to answer to this. Does he work, how, how does he decide if he's working with Crescent City's band or Interlockin's?
He works with all of them, but he gets, he gets with them and schedules his time based on their needs. Yeah, he is there, and he, he, it may be a part-time job, but he's working at full-time.
So you've worked with him as well in Crescent City? No, I just, that nod works.
Just so we know he's.
Well, you know, we've always known how remarkable he is. I just didn't know what he did, and I, I just thought it was only fair that I did that.
And just to remind you, we also employ Mr. Pignato part-time.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, he, he chooses to use the little bit of salary he gets towards his program, because God bless him, he and Mr. Albanese both have been amazing assets. And I guess in a small, poor district, you, you look carefully at, at what you do, who you hire, and, but truly, this has been such an advantage for our students, both with Mr. Albanese and Mr. Pignato, because once they retired, how do you replace people like that?
Right, we lost that.
Yeah, so to have them willing to, to come back and do what they do, I hope they'll be here long after I'm gone.
Well, and, and it's.
I've got a lady in the audience that wants to ask a question.
I'm sorry, I did not fill out your little form.
Well, we'll forgive you just this once.
Yes, we do. I just wanted to add in that I happen to know this week, when he's not getting paid, Nick was holding a band.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford, I so rudely interrupted you.
No, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move we affirm the approved contract with Mr. Nick Albanese.
I second it.
Got a motion from Mr. Wright, and a second from Ms. Crawford. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, if you're still ready to come, Ms. Odom, this for you. I'm going to turn over the gavel real quick to Mr. Wright, and just hear the fowl.
Just a minute, I'll be right there.
All right.
Appreciate the opportunity to address the board today. There's really been some tense moments at prior board meetings, and for the most part, we all just sort of take it in stride and move on. Our first and foremost job is providing quality education to the children of Putnam County, followed closely by taking care of the needs of our employees, as we are the largest employer in the county. So keeping these goals in mind, if you will. For the most part, we let things slide, roll off our back, and keep on keeping on. It has, however, come to the point where I feel I need to address the board. I've been told via email and word of mouth that I am taking things personally, and that it's not personal. At the last board meeting, June 16th, I was not able to be here because I was at the Florida School Finance Officer Summer Conference. This is a very important organization for all school districts in the state, and I attend each year. As you know, last year I was the president of the organization, and this year I'm the director at large. So of course, I felt it necessary to attend the conference, represent Putnam, and glean knowledge from my peers. During the board meeting that occurred on that day, which I watched from my hotel room, it became very personal, and I'm addressing you today to be put on record my rebuttal or response to things that were said that day. The first item I'd like to talk about is the discussion that entailed when the financial statements were pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. The main concern for Ms. Jorgensen, who pulled it, was a school board budget of $151,000. Ms. Jorgensen, in looking at the financial statements, was pulling that figure from one object, O101 Board of Education, page four of the financial expenditures by objects. I'll go ahead and pass that out. I'll be handing you a lot of pa, a lot of paper today, and I apologize for that, but I just want you to be able to look at things after, you know, when you're home and everything, and you'll see where this is coming from. Actually, that is just a small portion of the entire board's budget. Ms. Jorgensen stated that she had asked a couple of times for a run of that account, and that surely the board didn't spend $151,000. That $151,000 alone is the salary of the five board members. And yes, the board spends that entire $151,000 plus much, much more. There's benefits for the board members, there was the salary and benefits of the board auditor, payments for the board attorney, travel for the board members, membership dues for the board members, et cetera. If you don't mind, if you'll bear with me, I'd like to show you a clip of the meeting on June 16th. I can find it. We're not going to go through all of that, I'm going to get to minute 2845. I had it up to the starting point, but that was about two hours ago, so something happened while I wasn't in here. So I apologize. I was scared this was going to happen, I'm nervous. I'm not normally nervous up in front of y'all, but because this is personal, I am nervous, and I apologize. And I'm only doing this because statements were made in our own record, and I would like the opportunity to refute some of those statements, and I'll show you what I'm talking about if I ever manage to get there. Okay.
Because when I looked it over, um, the school board has a budget of $151,000, and I know we spent that a couple of times for a run, but that account.
Money comes part of our risk management. Can you hear now?
I've asked for about nine months now, been asking and asking, not you, so now I'm asking you.
It's not uncommon to have budgets, like a super, like a superintendent's budget or a school board budget, in case a project like the band uniforms or instruments or something came up that you really can't foresee. It's a lot easier than trying to do budget amendments than it, you know, to, to swap funds around at those time of year. Shannon, I know you, you know more about this than I do, so, anyway, that's what I, it's probably.
We swap funds around almost every meeting. I just don't mind if somebody comes up to me and says, "Hey, what do you guys do with $151,000 every year?" So what do I say, "It's a slush fund, it's a secret?"
Sorry.
That's why you come to the podium.
Right, and I guess my request is that you put it somewhere else. I'm serious, if some, if one of my constituents asks me, "What, what do we spend $151,000 a year, the five of us on?" I don't know what to say, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know how to say that. There's accounts in there that they're going to use that have nothing to do with the board. I know. I know, and it just concerns me the way it looks. If somebody goes online and looks at our budget, and it says the superintendent spends a quarter of a million, and we spend $150,000, and I understand what our budget's for. Have you ever been asked about it before? I mean, one of your constituents, have they asked you about?
No, yeah, no.
I just wanted to be a little polite. You sound like an egg.
Rhonda's given us printouts many times, many times.
Of this account, the board account?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to pause right there for a minute. As you heard, she said that, Ms. Jorgensen said that she had asked for nine months now, asking and asking, not me. So she's asking Shannon now. Bill tried to tell her that I had given it to her many times and her response was, of this account, the board account? Going forward more, she states that she could bring videotapes of the meetings where she's requested and hasn't received anything. I honestly would ask that she do so. I've had conversations with Ms. Jorgensen about this more than once this fiscal year that just ended. Ms. Crawford suggested to Ms., that Ms. Jorgensen follow up and call, to which she responded, I have, I have. I'll do it by certified mail. Return receipt requested. Shannon told Ms. Jorgensen that she would send her a report and the response was, I know, I had been told that before. Because I was watching, I was texting and telling Shannon that I had already provided that on more than one occasion. Shannon told Ms. Jorgensen that I said I had sent it in the past and Ms. Jorgensen replied, I haven't seen it. Now, I could go through and let you hear all that. I'm more than happy to. So you'll know that what I'm saying is verbatim what she said. And if you want me to hit play, I will.
We remember.
Okay. And everybody can get a copy of that.
I was on telephone.
Yeah.
I'd like you to make Shannon talk.
I'll get her up here eventually. But, but let me talk about the board's budget briefly. This, let me pass that out to you. And I'll say something about it once everybody gets a copy. This is a two-page document and you'll have, the first column is the original budget. The original budget is what's adopted on the system after the final budget hearing and the original budget on the system can never be changed. You'll see on page two at the very bottom, the board's original budget is 3.5 million dollars. Of that 3.5 million in the board's budget, 1.4 million of it is under Function 7100 Board of Education. If Ms. Jorgensen had looked at page three of the financials she pulled that day, expenditures by function, she would have seen that 1.4 million in Function 7100 Board of Education instead of just y'all's salary amount in Object 101 of 151,000. But based on prior conversations that I personally have had with Ms. Jorgensen this fiscal year, we moved out several items from being under the board's cost center and put it elsewhere. Prior to my State of the District presentation on April 21st, I had moved out about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars based on her request. I moved things out like instructional substitutes, sick and vacation leave payouts, and I put them over in my cost center because she had requested that they not be in the board's budget. That left, if you'll look at the second column, Revised Budget, that left 2.1 million dollars in the board's budget in April and a printout of that was passed out and discussed at length in the presentation on the 21st. During the State of the District presentation, we discussed that in the next year budgeting, I would move out even more, 1.2 million property insurance, 100,000 unemployment compensation, et cetera, because Ms. Jorgensen was concerned with the way it looked for the board to have a 2.1 million dollar budget. Now, in case anyone has forgotten the State of the District presentation, that was just two months ago. I also have that and it'll show where we passed the budget out and we discussed it in great detail. I don't know if all of you remember that or not, but apparently Ms. Kathy didn't remember it. So I'm, if you'll bear with me again, and this will be the last little clip. I apologize for this, but it is, I am trying to get some information across and I want some information on record because the other information is out there and on public record.
As Rhonda looks for what she wants to show you, let me just say that as I sit looking out at my management team, all of my directors work very hard every day. They in their departments have nothing except what is best for the students in this district and what they do every day. There is no ulterior motive. There's nothing nefarious. There's nothing that we are trying to do other than to improve Putnam County. They do countless hours, not only here at the district beyond what is required of them, but they also do much in the community, as I do, because most of us grew up here, went to school here, graduated here, raised our families here. We care about this community. And I have to tell you, it's very hard for me to sit quiet when someone makes accusations, allegations against any of these departments or any of these directors because I know how hard they work and there's nothing for them to gain by being deceitful or by trying to hide anything. There's no reason for us to do that. We, we don't have money in this district. We, you know, we're not taking trips to Tahiti. We're not. I don't, I don't know what the concern is, but certainly I want every board member to know, if you see something, if you hear something, if you don't understand something, all of my directors are willing, as I am myself, to talk to you at any time, to explain anything, to show you anything. I don't know about you, but most of us, including Ms. Jorgensen, who is a, as she says, a businesswoman, has never dealt with a 90 million dollar budget. Most of us in our lives have never dealt with that kind of money. Rhonda has done it consistently for years, kept us in the black when other districts were in the red, does a phenomenal job of explaining to anybody at any time, anything that they want to know. So as much as I'm willing to be available as they are, I, I just feel like she needed to come today. She's worked very hard. She has a CPA that she will protect because she worked hard to get it and she knows the rules and the laws and she's not going to jeopardize losing that in any way, shape or form. She uses the Red Book, which is basically the Bible for all accountants and she never veers from it. Nor does Shannon, who has really learned a lot this past couple of years and God bless her.
Rhonda's totally-
She's, she's now Rhonda's second in command and she as well wants everything to go well so that the department looks like they are as great as they truly are. And I don't know if you've ever sat down with this budget when it's presented to you and really tried to read it, but if you, if you're not an accountant, it's very hard to understand. And Rhonda does a great job of making it very clear. So I, I have to say that I really appreciate her and all 11 of the ladies that work in our finance department, they work hard, they work long hours, they get very frustrated because it's tedious and difficult and they do a tremendous, tremendous job. And-
Record, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Rhonda, weren't you the former president of the Florida School Finance Officers Association?
Yes, sir.
Could you say that for the record?
Last year, I was the president of the Florida School Finance Officers Association and in year 2017, I will be president of the Florida School Business Officers Association. Thank you.
And she's the director.
And your now retired director of the Florida School Boards Association called me last year to personally tell me the tremendous job that Rhonda Odom had done and how she represented Putnam County and what she did for the organization. And he said, I've worked for her, with her for years and she is amazing. So, just so you know that as well.
I wonder if we'll ever say that about Shannon.
Yes, you will.
Anything else that I haven't covered yet? No, I think you did.
Oh, God, I'm afraid.
You did ask for a-
I'll, I'll say something.
Okay.
I would not have your job-
I was scared here. I forgot to give it out after you.
And I agree with the woman at the training I had in Ocala. She said to hug you every time we saw you.
I want to get out of this. I have to give her name. The crazy one from Nilsfro. Gretchen?
Yeah, I think it may have been Gretchen. Yeah. And, and I understand why.
All right, you'll see it being passed out here.
Yeah, Rhonda's done a great job the past 19 years. As long as we've had her, we have never gone into the red and she's always had our set aside and most school districts can't say that. If you would look at what's happening in Manatee County, Clay County has some issues. If you, we, I don't have time to-
I'll go quickly forward so you can see where they at least start discussing the budget. So you'll know that we didn't overlook this and we won't waste a bunch more time with it, but I have a reason for doing all this. I'm-
Of course, the balance of property insurance is not paid from, from the millage and that was 1,204,699. So there's actually, at the current time, there's 244,314.19 back in the budget. That's the very last column at the end of page two. The other two sheets that are, the other sheets that are attached are other projects. We've spent all the millage flexibility for insurance on page three. There's zero balance left. Page four is our back-
It goes on for about five or six more minutes. It, we discussed the budget in detail. Again, I was approached by Ms. Jorgensen at that meeting and Mr. Wright talked about it also, moving some more of that stuff out. Because at the time I passed that budget out, it was this 2.2 million, 163,000. So-
So, not to confuse the issue, but the only reason why I think, you know, I was talking about moving some of that money, it simply, in my opinion, made our budget cleaner.
Sure, that's fine. That's not a problem.
That was the reason. It just seemed to make it a little bit cleaner and a little bit more understandable.
Going forward with the 1516 budget, I will move more things to different cost centers. In taking over the budget in 2008, I continue to budget some items like they had always been done in the past. Instructional subs, leave payouts, property insurance for the district, unemployment compensation, virtual instruction, community and schools, court reporters, all that kind of stuff had always been in the board's budget and I left it there. This is the first year that I've started moving some of this out. That's because this year, I've had several phone calls and meetings with Ms. Jorgensen and we've worked on the budget together. So I don't understand how she had forgotten about that. But I do want to say that the board's budget is not a slush fund, as it's been referred to a couple of times. It's not a savings account and it's not padded. If you'll look at the budget in front of you, that entire 2.1 million dollars has been spent. Look in the column that says fiscal year-to-date expenditures and also in the column that says amount committed. The committed is the items that are in for payment tomorrow, the accounts payable run that posts back to June 30th. So actually, the board's budget is 22,000 in the negative right now.
Yikes.
So, so you spend it all.
Write a check.
To recap, I began moving things out of the board's budget this year after speaking with the board chair and I'll move more out with the new year's budget as promised at the State of the District presentation. I do want to provide you with a detailed list of items paid from the different function objects within the board's budget this year that just ended. And that'll show you, there's, there's a lot of things. We pay communities and schools. That's the board prerogative. You, you vote to approve to give 28,000 for communities and schools for the VIP program. That's paid out of the board's budget. The money for, to match the money raised by the, the band. But just look at this three-page document and look at all the different things that have been paid out of there this year. And if you see items, I've marked the ones that I'm going to move out for sure. I'm moving out the virtual education program. That's under 5103 Function. That's 175,000 at the top of page one.
Okay, I see.
And then if you go all the way to the last page, the two items in Function 7900, which is Operation of Plant, that's unemployment compensation and the risk management for property insurance. I'm going to move both of those out. That still leaves under 7100 Board of Education, 768,000. So if you look through this, and you don't have to do it today, but if you look through this and you see other items that you feel like would be more appropriate somewhere else, get with me and I'll change it and we'll reduce the board's budget even more. But at least this part of it will reduce it from 3.5 million this fiscal year beginning to 700 and something thousand the year that started July 1.
Just don't move my salary out of there.
I won't. So as you can see, I have provided a printout before, the latest less than two months before these statements were made. The statements that went on record that day regarding me were not accurate and I'm unsure of why they were said, whether Ms. Jorgensen truly didn't remember, if there was some other reason. She sent me an email on June 18th and said she didn't remember seeing the account run or hearing it mentioned in my State of the District workshop, but as you could see, it was handed out and she was very involved in the discussion of it. She also said in the same email that nothing she does is personal and I shouldn't take it personal, but I could not help but take it personal when the comments were about me and my name was used as not providing requested information over a period of nine months and after multiple requests. That hurts. The meetings are recorded. They're put on our website with a link to YouTube. They're printed on a disc that anybody that requests a copy can get. When anyone listening or watching hears a person and authorities speak and they have no reason to doubt what has been said, that perception becomes the listener's reality. Therefore, I am refuting those statements publicly. If anyone at any time requests something from me, I try to get it done in a timely manner. And if I see I'm not going to be able to get to it, I ask one of my staff to help out. The next item I'd like to briefly discuss was an item that was moved from the, removed from the consent agenda and that was the May 2015 budget amendments. These were also pulled by Ms. Jorgensen, who stated that she went online and looked at the functions in the Red Book. She stated that we were taking 200,000 out of motor vehicles and moving it around and was wondering how we were doing that. She said we were adding 103,000 to interest expense and almost 100,000 to depreciation. She said those didn't show up in the original budget in the general fund. Now, we'll tell you, while I was sitting in my hotel room down there, I'm thinking, what the heck? We don't have depreciation in motor vehicles and interest expense in the general fund. So I didn't know and I didn't have that document in front of me, so I didn't know really what she was talking about. Since coming back, I realized what had happened. While Ms. Jorgensen was looking at the Red Book, she was looking at the objects, not the function. And this is for your reading pleasure for later. This is excerpts from the Red Book. That is the section on functions and objects. The budget of the general fund is transmitted via functions first and foremost to DOE. So that is the way that the budget amendments show up. When Ms. Jorgensen was speaking about 200,000 or truly 199,54586 to be exact, as coming out of motor vehicles, which is Object 650 in the Red Book, it was actually coming out of Function 6500, 650 and an additional O. That amount is, that is instructional-related technology. The 103,000 that was stated as being added to interest, Red Book Object 720, interest expense, was actually being added to Function 7200, General Administration. The nearly 100,000 that was stated as being added to depreciation, Red Book Object 780, was actually being added to Function 7800, Pupil Transportation. Ms. Jorgensen suggested that board members keep an eye on the general fund budget and see all the increases and decreases going on if they care because the end-of-the-year budget is completely different than that adopted at the beginning of the year. Now, we'll say that the finance office really does very few of the budget amendments that come before the board each month. If it's an FEFP calculation that increases or decreases our state funding, those are done by my office. If it's a change of accounting guidelines based on the Red Book or a suggested audit change, we also do that. Our district has always allowed site-based and school-based budgeting and management since way before my time here. And I've been here working on year 20 now. The schools earn general fund dollars based on their FTE and they've always been allowed to move that money around wherever they need it. They don't have to worry about salary, benefits and utilities. The district takes care of that. Their money is for other things that they might need, travel, supplies, whatever it might be. Also, salary and benefits are put into functions based on allocations. And allocations change throughout the year. You saw the list today. It was huge. So, once those allocations come before the board, the money needs to be transferred via budget amendments to follow the allocations. Needs arise that are more pressing than needs that were determined during the budgeting period and decisions have to be made on priorities. And thus, money may be moved by a department. When contract negotiations bring increases, we also have to do budget amendments to move money around to ensure there's enough in the appropriate function and objects to cover those additional expenses. The Red Book may add an extra function or a change of function, or the Auditor General's Office, or our own purchasing department for that matter, might tell us that one function is more appropriate than another for a planned expenditure. So a change is then made. And because the board only meets twice a month and expenditures, be they payroll, bills, purchase orders, et cetera, they occur on a daily basis. So we cannot stop business and get school board approval of budget amendments before moving the budget or the whole system would shut down. Now, since this meeting last month, I polled the other districts through our FSFOA survey abilities and every single district brings budget amendments to the board after the fact. This is not to do anything nefarious or to try to change the scope of the budget. It's to meet the needs of our students, our schools and our employees in a timely manner. And Ms. Jorgensen did approve the budget amendments that day, but she left it with one question that she wanted to answer to. And I'm sorry she's not here and I was thinking she was going to be on the phone line because that's what she had said. So I was hoping she would hear this. We'll be sure if she gets a copy of the tape. Her question was, what is the 199,000 coming out of autos? The response is, there was not 199,000 coming out of autos. It was out of instructional-related technology in the media department and it was due mainly to a Red Book function change. A portion went to 8200 Administrative Technology Services. You'll see the big increase on the budget amendment sheet and a portion went to 7200 General Administration. Now, the next item I would like to address is the personnel matters. This was because the Director of Finance had the qualification for being a CPA removed. A couple of years back, Staff Services began a massive overhaul of, of job titles and job codes to make them more in line with the DOE job codes for reporting purposes. Mr. Bates was put in charge of reworking Finance's job descriptions- Mr. Bates was put in charge of reworking Finance's job descriptions. He met with every person to get a detailed list of the duties that they performed, to be sure that, uh, what was included on their job description was actually what it was do- what they were actually doing. In the accounting front part of my office, which, uh, consists of myself and three other ladies, we met on several occasions, and it was a man at one time, I'm sorry, at the time this was happening, um, we met on several occasions and decided that we wanted our job descriptions to show a clear progression available, so we could attract and keep new talent that they would see they had the opportunity for advancements. The job descriptions, as they stood, had many discrepancies, is that they had not, uh, kept pace with the changes over the years. So, in revamping our job descriptions, we had our first level as a staff accountant, and that required only a bachelor's degree in accounting. Our second level was a senior accountant, that required a master's degree. Our third level was the Director of Finance, which required a master's degree with the ability to sit for the CPA exam, and that requires so many hours of accounting courses on top of a bachelor's, and working up under a CPA for at least a year. The fourth and final level was the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, the CFO, and it required a master's degree and a CPA. We sent all of these to go for board approval of the qualifications over a year ago. The changes were made to better align our progression in our office with no ulterior motive for one person. Um, it was done at a time when, from our knowledge, Mr. Bates was planning to continue on as a Director of Finance for a few more years. We thought for over a year now that they had all been changed. Our copies showed the board-approved date as of May and June of two thousand and fourteen. And here's, uh, here's copies of all of the job descriptions for all of our accountants. When the director decided to retire in January of two thousand and fifteen, we advertised using the copy of the job description we had. Ms. Wilson was certainly the most qualified applicant for the job. She was interviewed for, by a committee and offered the job, and I was very thrilled that she accepted. Uh, she's been a great asset to the district. I will say that on the same day that I made the announcement of who my Director of Finance was, I was approached by a district employee who stated that I had promised the job to her. I assured her that I had never done so, and I definitely had not. I then asked if she had even applied for it, and she said no. So I can only assume that this is what brought about the interest in the qualifications of our positions. The Director of Finance job was advertised appropriately for two weeks, interviews were conducted, and the best person for the job was hired. I was not aware that an oversight had occurred that kept one of our four accounting positions from having board approval of the qualification changes from the prior year. The copy of the job description on the district's website did not have the qualification for a CPA as a requirement, and had board-approved date of the job description, so I assumed I was using the correct one. I appreciate the board chair saying that the district needs two CPAs. Some districts have multiple, some have one, some have none. Um, I will say also that Shannon will be a CPA well before I retire, as she already meets all the qualifications to sit for the exam, and she's already bought study books to start the process. But let me also say that back when Tom was the Director of Finance, way, way back in the seventies, he was not a CPA, nor was anyone on the staff for many, many years. Uh, then Shirley Buck was Director for several years, she was not a CPA. When I was hired as an accountant with a promise over five years of becoming a director, I was not yet a CPA. Neither was the other accountant on staff, Ms. Bates. I had set for the exam in November before, before being hired in January, but results take quite a while on the CPA exam, because it's so massive. Uh, in March of the same year hired, I became a CPA as just the accountant for the district, not as the director. Once I became a director, a few years later, Tony Thompson changed the job description to say CPA, since I was already one. Um, after I moved up to CFO, I hired Robert Honda as Director. He stayed a couple of years, and he was a CPA. After he left, I advertised, advertised a couple of times, and finally appointed Tom Bates as Director of Finance for his second time round. He was still not a CPA. I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Deckabella said on the previous board meeting day. It was an oversight that one job description qualification change was not put on the board packet with the rest. After the oversight came to light, it was sent back to be corrected. Uh, in the meantime, I couldn't be happier with who I hired as Director of Finance. I truly feel she's the best fit for the district, and her knowledge and abilities will serve the Putnam County School District well. I also want to touch briefly on capital outlay funds. When the GMP for the new transportation facility was pulled from the consent agenda at the last board meeting, um, it was asked how much we have coming into that account each year. It was called a categorical and stated that categoricals were for computers. Uh, categoricals are state aid programs that add to the FEFP dollars that we receive from the state. Common categoricals are class size, um, lottery, lottery funds, uh, F, school recognition funds, instructional media, there's, there's several of them, but they, they are state dollars. The building and the transportation facility are actually being done utilizing our capital outlay funds, which are local funds derived from the one point five mil capital outlay taxes. Um, at my State of the District presentation in April, I discussed these funds, because a board member had asked me to be prepared to discuss them. I put on the overhead the advertisement we put in the paper on how we plan to spend the village. I discussed all things that the statutes say these funds can be spent on, how much we receive each year, and how much, uh, how we have doled it out, and how much we currently have left in these funds, uh, combined total from several years. Here are copies of those items. Um, since I'm here and I have your ear, I promise I'm only a couple more minutes and I'll be done. There are a couple more things I want to discuss.
Is that a promise?
That's a promise.
Okay.
I want to reiterate to you information regarding the Auditor General's Office. Based on our population, we will always be in the annual rotation of audits conducted by the AG office. You can look at eleven point four five of the Florida statutes regarding the AG office and their audits. Any of you at any time can request a meeting with the AG staff, who are currently stationed in the Finance HR conference room. You can discuss matters that you want them to look into or seek clarification of their duties. In an email I received, it was said that the board auditor was devastated and timid, and that the majority of the board agreed to get rid of the auditor after my recommendation that we didn't need one. I believe when asked point-blank, I did say I had no problem with having the position, but I felt it was unnecessary, as the position was currently duplicating services already provided. I don't believe I made a recommendation. I also want to talk about the finance office in general, as it was questioned why we were once so busy but can now take on extra duties. Our office is always busy. You'll see payroll here many, many nights and weekends. During the crucial summer months, the end of one fiscal year and the beginning of another, the accounting side of the finance office is in a time crunch. Uh, at the, it's the time of budgeting, the cost report, the AFR audits, et cetera. It begins July and ends late September. During budgeting, I often work until ten PM, midnight, two AM, et cetera. We were often shielded from phone calls, visitors, et cetera, because of the crucial time period. And I want you to know that this was exactly the point in time the new board auditor started, and if she was advised, the finance office was super busy, we were, as we are this time every year. We calmed down after September for a couple of months, then calendar year-end hits, and we have W-2s, ten ninety-nines, IRS reports, new rates for insurances, et cetera. It was implied that we would now have additional time to scrutinize the school's internal accounts, because we had new staff. That's not really the case. We are finally just truly getting steady and getting more seasoned staff on board. Since two thousand and eight along, we have lost six accountants at varying levels, due to retirement, quitting, being let go, transferring, et cetera. That's almost one a year. You lose that expertise, you scramble, and those that are still there pick up the duties of the person that left while you hire and train a replacement. At the current time, I don't have additional staff. I have all of my positions filled, and we, I feel like we've got truly well-trained, true accountants within our office now, and I feel confident that they are here to stay for a while. Uh, we've never been involved in the internal accounts at the school level, as we don't have control over those funds, access to those funds, et cetera. Our sole involvement in the past was to answer red book questions, uh, if the staff called, to collect the principal's monthly report, and to just verify, really for mathematical errors, to collect their internal account boxes at fiscal year-end, and turn them over to the CPA firm hired to conduct the audit. When the audit was complete, we reviewed the findings and spoke with each school, uh, that had findings and offered suggestions for improvements. If looking at the monthly principal's report, we felt uncomfortable with the way things looked, we would ask the auditing firm to pay special attention to that particular school. After we had three episodes of theft at the school level, my staff and I met and looked for ways to help prevent and deter fraud. We conducted bookkeeper trainings a couple of times. We required all schools to move over to the EPS software, and paid for the software and checked stock and supplies for the first year, so as to not inconvenience the school. We had trainings on EPS with the bookkeepers. This was all implemented before the board auditor came on staff. We took it upon ourselves to be more involved under other duties assigned. We assigned ourselves to it. We now plan to take this strategy a step further, uh, and begin conducting random spot checks and visits to schools. It won't occur during crunch time, July through September, but at that time, the accounting firm is auditing them anyway. We plan to watch EPS, and when we know there's a big event, like a football game or a fundraiser, we will be watching for reasonable, timely deposits into the system. By spreading this out between four of us, we believe that we can work this into our schedules and add stewards of internal account funds to our duties. And finally, I'd like to briefly discuss the report handed out by the board chair at the June second board meeting that was referenced as findings. It was implied that GAAP generally accepted accounting principles and the red book weren't being followed. The report from the board auditor didn't say that, just that she used GAAP, red book, SBE codes, NEOLA, and Florida statutes to base her recommendations upon. If we weren't following GAAP and red book, it would be notated in our annual audits by the AG office, and that is not the case. The first two findings, if you will, board auditor policy and procedures are not defined and need to clarify understanding and expectations are things that the board auditors were working on to establish her duties and role. The third and fourth items were to develop cash receipt controls that also mentioned segregation of duties and proper bonds, and these were for the internal accounts. We do utilize numbered tickets, um, numbered cash receipts, we require dual signatures, et cetera. We segregate duties to the best of the ability with the number of staff each school office has. There's no way to totally segregate duties. Recommendations were made, like use the chart of accounts in the red book. We do, and we take it to a more in-depth level. It was, a suggestion was made to remove bookkeepers as check signers. We discussed with, um, board auditor why this was not doable. Create purchase orders for internal account purchases less than twenty-five dollars. They have internal account purchase orders that they use instead of the district purchase orders, as these are internal accounts of the school. Another recommendation, research and establish that bonds are properly in place. We do our bonding through risk management at Nefec, so, um, I believe the bonds are properly in place, but I know that, that has been being looked into by our, uh, board attorney and by Nefec personnel.
How much longer are you gonna go?
I'm about there.
I was gonna say that I think most of us on the board know that you have not been happy.
Yes.
And we knew...
But things have been said publicly, David, and I felt like I needed to respond publicly.
Some people know that you applied out of county.
Yes.
You got the job and refused to leave because you love Putnam County.
That's true.
And for that, we love and appreciate you.
Thank you.
But you go ahead and finish anything else.
Okay, well, I will, it's, it's not much more. Um, the next finding regarding deteriorating financial condition, going concern, improvement to financial management, ended up being a charter school finding recommendation, though it was not notated as such. And y'all all have copies of this handout, because, uh, the board chair passed them out at the last meeting. Uh, so it really had no bearing on the finance office. I have provided memos also to the board regarding the financial status concerns of said charter school on more than one occasion. The next finding was that internal account reports had not been presented to the board and made a part of the public record. We always just provided copies of the report to board members. However, beginning with the two thousand and thirteen report, we submitted the internal audit report to the board during a meeting and will henceforth from here on. This, the finding was also mentioned that the administrative internal account was left off the internal account audit by the CPA firm. Our office is actually the one that found that, that as soon as it occurred and notified CRI that they had left it off. It was the first year for that account, so it was an understandable error. The next finding was regarding local purchasing preferences is not, is not a finance issue, and the final finding was again about board auditor policy, as was the first. The board auditor did state that, um, it was up to the superintendent and the departments on whether they did anything with the recommendations, because the board was more on the policy side. On the recommendations that were made to us, if there was any that we were not already doing, we gave reasons why the recommendation might not be the best fit for the district. And I have also provided a copy of this sheet to the AG office, so that they can see if there are any areas of concern, because I want to be sure that we keep open communication, and if there is the potential for some findings, I want the AG office to look into it and to let us know. I appreciate the opportunity to, to address the board today, to discuss items that have bothered me, to provide clarification and maybe some more knowledge. I'm not trying to create drama or ill will, but really couldn't live for myself in my heart of hearts if I did not defend myself and correct some misstatements, provide more information on some items, and pass out some documents. This is my county, I live here, I have kids and grandkids here, and I don't want inaccurate, possible defamatory things said about me that could eventually get back to them. I wanted to make the board aware of all that is going on, and the fact that I had felt like for a few months now, that we were on the precipice of creating the feel of a hostile work environment. After at least stating my piece today, I now feel like I can breathe easier and continue the job that I'm paid to do and that I love. I'm open to questions or comments now, and my door is always open to all of you. Thank you for your time.
Rhonda.
No, I would just say Rhonda, Shannon, yeah. Thank y'all so much for, um...
What a lot of people don't know is, is how often a board member will walk in, and, and Rhonda and Shannon will spend extended time with us, working on issues. You heard about one of those issues that, that was brought up and that was resolved, the internal accounts. I spent many, many hours with Rhonda and Shannon on that issue, and, um, they will, and they do, work with the board very, very well, and they bring resolutions, and, um, so thank you for working with me on that, and I think it's a great solution, so...
And you worked for me for a long time, so I, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Keep Shannon in line.
Oh, really?
All right, new business. Uh, discussion input, action and development of an advertisement, a policy specific to Putnam County School District Police Department, Travis Weaver.
Keep it short.
If y'all don't mind, I would, um, well, I was gonna ask if you don't mind, can we go through these one at a time in great detail?
No.
Just kidding.
Knock you out.
I do have one, one of the policies that was submitted through board docs...
Just don't make Rhonda mad.
That I'm asking, um...
Take one and pass it.
Take one and pass it, yeah. Uh, two minor changes. One word in the first paragraph changed from, um, will to the word may, and the deletion of the final sentence in the second paragraph. It was, uh, not relevant.
Do, do we need to move on that? Okay. Uh, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move we accept, um, uh, the policy, uh, with the, uh, accepted changes.
Second.
I have a motion by Terry Wright and a second by Nikki Cummings. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
For advertise, do we need...
Yeah, these are for advertise.
These were, we didn't need to vote to do that, we just needed consensus.
Yeah, just consensus on advertise.
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 All right. Number two, discussion input and action to determine if the full board or an expulsion committee will conduct expulsion hearings in the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year, and you know how I feel about that, huh?
Guys, I'll tell ya, we've done it both ways.
Changed my mind.
I, I, I've sat, I've sat on the expulsion committee many times, as y'all have, and, and I think the, um, committee system provides, uh, a bit more balance and a bit more perspective than just, just us sitting on it. I think it's, um, uh, we get input from different disciplines, um, within this building, within the district, and I think it serves the students best, and, um, I've just seen a lot of healthy resolutions come out of that, and so I, I would, I would be in favor of going back to committee system.
All right, is that a motion?
Um...
Do I need a motion on that, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, Ms. Chairman, I move that we move back to the committee system for expulsion hearings in the year 2015 and 16.
I second it.
A second from Ms. Crawford and the motion was made by Mr. Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Number three, discussion input and action on a settlement agreement with Susan Douglas Thompson. Mr. Douglas, I will turn that over to you, I suppose.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. You'll remember that the board voted to do away with a board auditor position. That left Ms. Thompson's contract a moot issue because there was not going to be a school board auditor in the year after her initial contract expired. So her contract provided for 90-day termination notice. She hired an attorney, Mr. Michael Woodward, and together, myself on behalf of the board and Mr. Woodward on behalf of Ms. Thompson, we were able to reach a settlement agreement that I thought was acceptable to bring to the board for your ultimate determination and vote. And in essence, what this provides is 31 days of Ms. Thompson's pay and some other matters. There is a mutual general release. That's something that was requested by Mr. Woodward. As part of this agreement, Ms. Thompson is agreeing not to bring any actions, legal actions against the board for anything. And Mr. Woodward, on behalf of his client, wanted a similar type of a situation where the district would not bring any action against Ms. Thompson. I'm not aware of any bad acts or omissions that would create liability on Ms. Thompson's behalf. If there were issues by signing this agreement, we would not be able to pursue those issues. So the board needs to be aware that if she did something wrong or omitted something by signing this agreement, we would not be able to pursue that against her.
So your recommendation is that we accept the settlement agreement?
I think it's, if there are any questions about the board members, I'd like to answer any questions. I think it is a, an agreement that we can be satisfied with. Of course, if you have any concerns or if you have any knowledge that we ought to know about, now's the time to say it. But I think based on all the information that I have currently, that this is an agreement that would benefit the board.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move we approve the settlement agreement with Susan Douglas.
All right, we have a motion to approve the settlement agreement.
Second.
Second from Ms. Cummings. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. Oh my goodness, can we cut the superintendent out of the report? She'll go on and on. We have board reports, but we, Terrell Hill came in for a moment. Mr. Mayor, it was indeed a pleasure to see you in here not getting an award for athletics or some of your scholar abilities. Is there anything you wanted to say to us today?
No, sir, just sitting there.
All right. Mr. Wright?
Yep. Just a couple of quick things. School is going to be starting before we know it and just want to give a big shout out to all the teachers who've worked so hard and have done a lot of training outside of the classroom. A lot of folks may not know this, you know, there's this myth floating around that teachers get the summers off. My wife didn't get a day off till July and that is okay. We signed up for that and we love it and many other teachers have done the same thing and so excited about, school gonna be starting back real soon. I was able to go down to Orlando and listen through the door to some of the Marzano stuff that was going on and so it's been a good summer, some good learning, some good stuff happening, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Crawford?
Well, I just returned to the United States. I spent a week in Ireland and a week in Scotland and it was wonderful and their school systems are very different than ours. I think we should be very proud of what we have. Also today, Mr. Buckles and I, along with our superintendent, were able to attend, and I'm not sure I have the name of this right, but the new GP, oh, Ms. Muir was there, and Ms. France, there were a lot of people there. St. John's River Environmental Cent, no?
River Center.
St. John's River Center and it is the most exciting place. I cannot wait for our kids, our students, to be taken on a field trip there and to interact with all the hands-on exhibits they have, to learn more about our history in Putnam County, about the river in Putnam County, the environment. Ms. Chriswell told me that I think our 4th and 5th grade teachers are gonna receive some training on the curriculum and how to integrate that into their lessons and it's just a really exciting thing for Putnam County.
There's a lot of pictures that Ms. Crawford was able to understand.
Right.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that, along with Water Works, Water Management, Seminole Electric, all these local businesses will come out to our schools and do great presentations for the kids and hands-on learning. Even Malacca Hatchery, I helped do something last year when we went out and taught the kids about the sturgeons and the fish and so there's so many great hands-on things that are local and free and so I'm real encouraged for our community to always open their doors wide for our educational purposes, for our kids to learn more hands-on. I feel strongly that hands-on learning is something that will stay fresh in their minds continuously. So also, we got another America, Feeding America was wonderful in Crescent City. I must have been thanked at least 25 times, just to people thankful to have food, extra food. We're gonna do it again August 12th at 9:00 at Miller Intermediate. The school was very, very receptive and very excited to help the community, to help the families. It's something that's tangible. It's not theory, it's not, oh, and this great, oh, we want to help you, we want to give you paperwork. I mean, it's actually, you show up and you wait in line 20, 30 minutes and you go home with great food and they get so excited and the superintendent was so excited and we had a great time helping out with that. So again, I want to invite everybody, you know, and even to help our custodians, our lunch crew, everybody, you know, benefits. There was no specific things you had to have to say, oh, I need to qualify for helpful, you know, food. When you have four kids at home and it's summertime and you have to feed them constantly, it's something, I'm sure, Mr. Buckles, when you have a bunch of grandkids over, you know the feeling of keeping your...
We all read the refrigerator.
Yep, exactly. So just thanks again for Feeding America and the partnership we were able to work out with them. We hope to do more in the coming year. They were so thankful to be able to partner with us on these occasions and look forward to more opportunities, so thanks.
You through?
Yeah.
Well, I hope you weren't raising any Swanee River jumping sturgeons because I saw where a five-year-old was killed. I went up jumping out of the river. That was awful, yeah. Just real quick, I have contacted each of you board members and let you know that we did have a $600,000 appropriation clear. The governor's desk did not perceive the acts and that'll be for the superintendent to work out the appropriate manner and to most positively benefit our students that will attend the new career tech center. She's got all kind of Betty Crocker-type ideas, so I'm sure, I'm sure she will do a good job. The money has not been wired yet and I know there was an article in one of the columns this week, but it was very erroneous about what we do. You know, we picked up a million dollars last year and that's $600,000 this year and those are not grants, those are not, well, they probably gonna get it anyway. Those are, that's working through the system. It's like I told publisher of our local paper this morning, it's like making sausage. It's not pretty, but it sometimes comes out as a pretty good sausage. So with that, I'll pass it on to Ms. Chriswell.
Charlie.
You want Charlie to go first? I was trying to make you hurry.
He always does. I'm always last.
The state of legal affairs is good. If you have any questions, please let me know, but I've been working really hard and thank you for all your responsiveness. Whenever I have something come up, I need to speak with you individually. I always appreciate the ability to get ahold of you and you're always willing and able to take a phone call. Thank you.
And I'll just say again, thank you to Rhonda and the finance department. They do an absolutely outstanding job with what sounds like a lot of money, but when you're talking 1,600 employees and 10,600 students, 18 schools, it's a lot to manage and they do a tremendous job with a small department of 11 people. They could use more, but she manages and she holds the line on her department as she does on the rest of us. She doesn't treat her department any differently than the rest of us and we're very fortunate to have she and Shannon running that ship because it is a huge responsibility. And as Jane said in the last meeting, I wouldn't have your job for any, I'd eat dirt before I'd do her job. I wouldn't even want to try. All of our departments, all 15 of them, are working very hard to get ready for school and all of the directors, they do a tremendous job. They work long hours, they come in early, they stay late, they don't, you don't know that, they just do it because they are dedicated to the mission of this district and I don't publicly thank them as often as I should and at one meeting, when you allow me the time, I'll have each of them stand so you can look at them because you need to know how hard they work and how much they do for this community. Most of them attended today at the River Center. It is really, really exciting. The city has taken on this wonderful facility from Georgia Pacific who built it and did a great job. Our kids are gonna benefit from it. It's designed, the curriculum is designed, I think actually, for 2nd through 7th grade and I have to tell you, Laura France, our director of elementary education, did a super job. Not only is she a part of that committee as they put this together, but she spoke today and has done a tremendous job in working with Terry Haddaway at GP and the rest of the committee and I'm telling you, it's a facility, if you haven't been there, you have to go look at it. And then go upstairs because you go up on top of the roof and you can see the river and there's a lot of opportunity. It's gonna be available for all kinds of groups in the community to use at a small cost, which hopefully will have enough money come in for the city to be able to pay the person who is in charge and also maybe make some money for the city. It's gonna be a really good opportunity and I think it's gonna be really good for the community, so I'm really excited about it. And Terrell Hill, our mayor, is here today and he was there and spoke and I think he knows the opportunity we may have with that and...
You could put a long diving board on that, you could jump in.
He probably could. Anyway, it's beautiful up there and it's gonna offer a lot of opportunity for us here in Palacka and Putnam County and working with them is gonna be really exciting, so I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to all of our teachers, not just 4th and 5th, being able to come and see the facility and any of our students. It's a wonderful field trip for any of them at any time. So again, Mayor Hill, I'm looking forward to working with you on that. It's gonna be really exciting. Also, we did, at Mr. Buckles' suggestion, he is the liaison to the legislature for the board and over a year ago, he suggested that we look at getting our own lobbyist and I'd never thought about it before. We talked to David Browning, who is a local boy, grew up here, graduated here, and we're always talking about our local students leaving and not coming back. Mr. Douglas did and is actually here. Mr. Browning is in Tallahassee and as it turns out, he's done a tremendous job in a very short period of time. When we first talked to him about the many projects we had that are not funded by the state, he came in and listened to them and chose one he felt was viable and last year he pursued that. We paid him two months and in two months, he got us $1 million so that we could move forward with the project in South Putnam and that is tremendous. This year, we talked to him about a partnership with First Coast Technical Institute that we would provide them with a building at a very nominal yearly charge so that they could provide the program to the community and they could add to what we already have for our students in career technical classes. We have them all at all three of our high schools, but we don't have the money to offer everything at every high school. They're going to bring in their program and our students who don't have culinary arts at their high school but would like to pursue that will be able to go to First Coast Technical, which will be located at the old Mosley campus, and they will be able to take culinary arts there. And those students who are at the high school that doesn't have welding, if they're interested in welding, they'll be able to come in because we will use our buses. I'll be working with Mr. Simons on providing transportation during the day for our students to come in from their high schools to take the courses that they're interested in. And the really exciting part of this is First Coast Tech is looking at bringing in a whole construction program. And I know that we have many students that are interested in that. There's many phases in construction and it's gonna be an opportunity that our students wouldn't have otherwise because we cannot afford to offer that in our high schools. So we're really looking forward to moving forward with that and David Browning was able to get us $600,000 approved, not vetoed by the governor, so the money will be coming to us and when it gets here, we'll be working with First Coast Tech to provide some things and renovate the cafeteria and the kitchen for their program, their culinary arts program and some other things that we're gonna do there. So we're going to work with them to not only help the community and the adults that attend those programs, but provide additional programs for our high school students, so that's really exciting.
About transportation?
And transportation, we did, you probably saw in the paper that we did our groundbreaking and, oh my goodness, we put the shovels in the ground and the next thing I knew, woo! It was, it was, wow! Everything was gone. I mean, they mean business when they start to work, so I was very impressed and Scott can fill you in on any of that you're interested in, go out and drive by. We will not ever have to worry about vandalism of our buses again. I'm so excited 'cause they're right there in front of the sheriff's department. We are really excited about this piece of property and about what's going to happen there in the transportation department and certainly we had to do this anyway, even though it's a good idea, because the Palacka Housing Authority purchased our current facility from the previous administration and so we do have to get out. And I do have a letter from Mr. Nelson who asked me to inform him and Scott, I'll need to get with you on this letter. I think they kind of want to know, he's asked me several times and now he's put it in writing, kind of wants to know, you know, when we will be out. Well, I guess when you see us moving, 'cause right now, you never know with construction. Hopefully, everything will go smoothly, but you know. I also just wanted to mention that we, in all of our departments, deal with volumes of paperwork and issues from not only the school board and the union, but the state and the federal government. And certainly, none of us are perfect. We don't live in a perfect world, so on occasion, there is gonna be human error, but truly understand, there is no reason for it. We don't do anything on purpose. We try to do what's best for the district. We are gonna have errors occasionally. Human error happens everywhere. I don't know an agency anywhere in this town, this state or this nation that doesn't have errors, so we apologize in advance. We will do everything we can to keep them to a minimum. The last thing I have comes from Swanee County, which is interesting, you mentioned that earlier, and I just want to briefly read this to you. Dear Ms. Chriswell, I want to take this opportunity to laud members of your staff that have been instrumental in supporting our district with their time, knowledge and resources. I had asked the state's DA team to put me in contact with a district that, like ourselves, was working to emerge and move forward from difficult circumstances. It was my good fortune that the team placed me in the path of the Putnam County school system. A true Putnam asset, Ms. Laura France, has provided our district with much guidance in our curriculum mapping and math initiatives. She created an opportunity that allowed us to bring together our support teams so that we might learn from the body of work that Putnam has set in motion. I can't thank her enough for her willingness to share and be available to assist us in our endeavors. Your instructional coach, Ms. Kathy Oyster, has been a tremendous help and has kept a line of communication open with our teacher support colleagues that they have found to be a most important necessity. Putnam is most fortunate to have such great assets and we are most grateful to have them as mentors and advisors. Thank you for allowing them to work with us. David V. Campbell, Director of Elementary Education, Swanee County Schools. So not only do we try to work hard here in the county and certainly with agencies in the county, but as other districts need our help, we try to help them and we get all that we can from others as well. And I just want you to know that this is the kind of thing that comes into us often and Laura and her team have done a great job and she deserves much praise and thanks for that. And with that, I will close by saying, things are great in Putnam County schools.
And we have several more items. If you have any questions, ask now. If, I don't think we need a vote on these.
We don't vote on them.
We don't vote on them. Any more questions? All right, with that in mind, we will call this meeting to a close. You're adjourned.